Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please stand for a pledge to the flag.
My pledge will be allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM. The sixth day of July, 2017. We're convening in the Alexander O'Connell Auditorium. Presiding Officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, Superintendent of Schools; Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel; Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary; Mr. Leo J. Smith, Jr., Assistant Superintendent for Business; Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction; and Mr. Mitchell Piscual, our Board Counsel. The meeting's open to the public. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Finerty?
Here.
Trustee Garillic?
Present.
Trustee Lawande?
Here.
Trustee Munoz?
Here.
Trustee Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Here.
President Broderick?
Here.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting, with the agenda, was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
At this time, do I have a motion to adjourn to go into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion by Trustee Desmond. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Lawande. A motion, a second, to adjourn to go into closed session. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond? Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
It is 8:03. The Board will return. Okay, at this time, I'd like to reconvene the public meeting. It is 8:58. I'll take a new roll call. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Finerty?
Here.
Trustee Garillic?
Present.
Trustee Lawande?
Here.
Trustee Munoz?
Here.
Trustee Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Here.
President Broderick?
Here.
Okay, we'll start with our consent agenda.
Sure, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I interrupted you there.
I'd just like to make two announcements, actually. One, I'd just like to formally welcome Dr. Wonko as our new interim superintendent. Wish him all the best. The other thing I'd like to ask is that we maybe give a moment of silence for a longtime teacher here in the Bayonne District, Mary Ellen Fink. She was a kindergarten teacher for many years at Midtown Community School. She retired a few years ago, and she'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
We have a consent agenda. The agenda reads 1 to number 9, but number 9 is being moved to non-consent. So the consent agenda will be resolutions 1 through 8. 1 through 8. And do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Aye.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
They'll bring us to number 9. All our resolutions are on the bulletin board. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education desires to sell by public notice the following parcel of land, Block 277, Lot 33, West 9th Street, Bayonne. Whereas the Board has determined that the land being sold has ceased to be suitable or convenient for the use for which it was acquired, is no longer suitable for school purposes in accordance with NJSA 18A 20-5.3. Whereas the land is not part of the district's current long-range facility plan. Whereas the Board has determined it beneficial to the district that sale of the land take place in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 18A 20-6 and NJAC 6A 26-7.4 for a minimum bid amount of not less than $110,000. Whereas the Office of the Hudson County Superintendent of Schools has reviewed and approved the proposed public notice of sale of land. Be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education authorizes the Assistant Superintendent for Business and School Business Administrator upon approval by the State of New Jersey Department of Education Office of School Facilities and Finance to solicit bids for the public sale of a aforementioned parcel of land and approves the sale to the highest bidder, who meets all the requirements of notice of public sale. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second on resolution number 9. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
No.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
No.
Trustee Ryan?
No.
Vice President Wilbeck?
No.
And President Broderick?
Yes.
Okay, and the resolution does not pass. Okay, number 10. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to make administrative adjustments and reassignments to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore be it resolved that it is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools that the below-named personnel be transferred, reassigned to the position listed next to their name, be it further resolved that this Board of Education approves and recommends recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to transfer, reassign the personnel listed below on the effective dates indicated. Kathleen O'Donnell, 10-month secretary to a 12-month secretary, salary $34,808, effective July 1, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Nope.
I make that motion.
There, we have a motion by Trustee Desmond. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Munoz. So a motion and a second on resolution 10. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
11. Where there's a need for test administrators, proctors, and tech support in the Bayonne School District for Summer 2017 Park Assessment in the area of Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Therefore be it resolved that the following personnel listed below will serve as test administrators, proctors, and tech support based upon enrollment as needed and will be paid by local funds. List of staff members, $25 an hour, resolution 11 on our bulletin board. Do we have a motion?
I move.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and second on resolution 11. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Abstain.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
12. Whereas the Superintendent of Schools hereby recommends the reappointment of the administrators on the following list from September 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, except where otherwise noted. Whereas these administrators do not have tenure of office at the present time, recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, now therefore be it resolved, contracts must be executed by personnel involved in proper offices of the Board and approved as deformed by Board Counsel. Originally appointed 2014-15 school year, will attain tenure September 2, 2018. Renee Bush from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, will attain tenure September 2, 2017. George Becker and John Rickert, originally appointed the 2016-2017 school year, will attain tenure September 2, 2018. Mr. Michael Pearson from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution 13. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is authorized to reduce the number of teaching staff members employed in the district whenever in the judgment of the Board it is advisable to abolish any such positions for reason of economy or for other good cause pursuant to NJSA 18A 28-9. Whereas for reasons of economy, the Board previously reduced the number of teaching staff positions through such reductions in force effective June 30, 2017. Whereas in light of changed circumstances since the time of such reduction in force, the Board finds it advisable to rescind such action and restore a number of those employees to their prior positions in the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education is follows. Number 1, that the reduction in force affecting the following positions effective June 30, 2017, is hereby rescinded by the Bayonne Board of Education, 116 teaching staff members. Number 2, that the individuals identified on the attached list be restored to their prior positions and promptly provided appropriate notification of their employment status. And number 3, that the Superintendent or his designee is authorized to provide the necessary notification to the affected employees. This is resolution 13. There is four pages of backup. It is on the first bulletin board. Do I have a motion on number 13?
I'll make that motion.
And then we have a second?
I'll make that second.
So we have a motion and second on resolution 13. Carol Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Regrettably, I cannot vote on this, but I didn't vote to lay them off to begin with, so welcome back.
Okay, so that's an abstain. Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Absolutely yes, and welcome back.
Okay. Trustee Lawande?
Welcome back, yes.
Yes. Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
With great pleasure, welcome back, yes.
And President Broderick?
I'd just like to say that for many people out there, this would be a pretty good night, but I want us to remember that for others, it's not a very good night. And all I can basically say is that we have to work that much harder to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. We have to spend within our means. We have to look at every dime that goes out before we hire somebody. We certainly don't want to make the mistakes that have been made in the past. We want to still provide the absolute best education for all our students, and that should never change, but certainly with only the finances that we can afford in this city. So with that being said, I'd happily bring those other people back, yes.
Mr. D'Angelo, you can get up to the microphone.
By my count, there are 60 teachers that haven't been rehired. Is that accurate?
I believe it's a little less than that.
That's right.
I'm sorry. The number of teachers?
Fifty-nine. Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine? Okay. What plans do you have for them? Well, in light of, we understand that you may be getting $3.2 million from the state in additional aid.
As of tonight, this is kind of the bare minimum and the maximum. The people we brought back tonight, we need to open up our buildings in September. It's also what we can afford at this moment. We do have, maybe Dr. Wonko can explain that, there is another tier that's being looked at, and if finances come to that, like I've said many times, none of the people let go because of performance, they let go strictly for finances. If finances become better and we have positions, they would be people that we'd certainly look at first. Other than that, I don't know, I can't make a promise tonight because promises were made in the past, and that's what got us into the position we're in right now. So that's the last thing I'd like to do, is make some promise that I certainly couldn't keep. The last promise I made was that we'd be here tonight with some names, and I'm happy that we could do that.
Is Dr. Wonko gonna speak on?
Dr. Wonko?
Good evening, everyone. I echo what the President has said. We're at what we would consider to be a skeleton crew to open up the schools at this point. I've been working with the Central Office of Personnel, I've also met with all the principals, directors. We are working on another tier. If things change, we might be able to expand. However, I need to caution everyone. I was hired as the interim to make the transition to get us back on track, and I don't want to put you in a position where you'll be here next year with another round of layoffs. So we're looking at finances very carefully before we make any more appointments.
Thank you.
Okay, next resolution is number 14. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is authorized to reduce the number of non-certificated employees employed in the district for reasons of economy. Whereas for reasons of economy, the Board previously reduced the number of positions through such reductions in force as effective June 30, 2017. Whereas in light of changed circumstances since the time of such reductions in force, the Board finds it advisable to rescind such action and restore a number of those employees to their prior positions in the district. Now therefore be it resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education as follows. Number 1, that the reduction in force affecting the following positions effective June 30, 2017, is hereby rescinded by the Bayonne Board of Education. Five 12-month secretaries, Christina Ellerson, Diane LaFonte, Cheryl Hedler, Mary Ann Bruno, and Maria Dorak. Seven 10-month secretaries, Michelle Cotter, Cassandra Fiadini, Drew Sizowski, Patricia Fagan, Malenia Fowler, Lara Olson, and Erica Flowers. And one attendance officer, Roberto Pullman. Number 2, that the individuals identified on the attached list be restored to their prior positions and promptly provided appropriate notification of their employment status. And 3, that the Superintendent or his designee is authorized to provide the necessary notification to the infected employees. Do I have a motion on number 14?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll move.
So we have a motion and a second on number 14. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Once again, just to let you know that this area here, we'll be working with seven less secretaries next year than we had this year. So just to let you know that cuts are being made everywhere across the Board, and of course, I say yes.
Number 15. Whereas there's a need for security guards in the Bayonne Public School District, therefore be hereby resolved that the staff members listed is hereby appointed to the position of security guard for the City of Bayonne School District on a 10-month basis for the period September 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, with a salary of $30,743. Subject to Board discretion, single medical coverage with carrier to be determined by the Board of Education. We have two members, Timothy Carey and Kristy Ann Smith. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second on resolution 15. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
This is a year-to-year basis?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
16. Whereas based on enrollment of students in various grade levels and education programs throughout the school district, it is necessary that the following staff be reassigned within the school district or newly-appointed personnel be assigned to the following positions. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Michael A. Wonko, the attached assignments and reassignments are hereby made effective September 1, 2017. All assignments/reassignments are made without change in salary unless otherwise indicated. Rose Hopper, Henry E. Harris, Community School Guidance Counselor to Bayonne High School Guidance Counselor, Laura Craig, Coordinator of the Academy of Fine Arts and Academies to Teacher of Music. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And do I have a second?
I second that.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
I'm saddened by some of this, but yes, I'm glad these people are still with us.
So that's a yes. Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
No.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution 17. Whereas the Board of Education has employees in positions that are not represented or covered by collective bargaining agreement with regards to the terms and conditions of employment and salaries. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to establish the salaries of those unrepresented employees for the 2017-18 school year. Therefore be it resolved that the salaries for all non-represented personnel are hereby approved as per the attached list. Be it further resolved that all other terms and conditions of employment for those unrepresented employees with the exception of salary, workday schedule, and work calendar shall continue to be determined in accordance with the respective collective bargaining agreements of similarly situated represented employees, except that part-time, non-certificated employees shall not be entitled to sick leave. Be it further resolved that all salaries of attendance personnel shall reflect the amount for the longevity calculated as follows, effective July 1, 2010, after 15 years through 20 years of service, $1,350; after 20 years of service, $1,870; after 25 years of service, $2,490. Be it further resolved that all full-time employees covered by this resolution, whose employment commences as of July 1, 2007, and thereafter shall receive employee-only health benefit coverage, prescription, medical, and dental for their employment with the Board, with an option to purchase family coverage at the COBRA rate established by the Board each year. Medical coverage shall be at the Board-selected plan. Also, any part-time employees who employment commences as of July 1, 2007, will have the option to purchase the Board-selected plan for the employee only. This does not include prescription or dental. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be effective retroactive to July 1, 2017. And then there are 1, 2, 2 pages that follow, resolution 17 and the backup are all on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
On that motion and second, with resolution 17, Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Abstain.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Abstain.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution 18. Whereas it's been determined that staff is needed to undertake and complete several school district activities. Whereas the interim Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Michael A. Wonko, has recommended the following additional personnel be assigned to the attached program. Therefore be it hereby resolved that the attached named personnel are appointed on a per diem basis and at the salaries listed for summer programs and projects based on the school district's needs. This is guidance counselors, and we're adding Rose Hopper, Bayonne High School Guidance Counselor, nine days unless otherwise stated. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
On that motion and second, resolution 18, Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution 19. Whereas pursuant to NJAC 6A:23A-3.1 and its contract with the Superintendent of Schools, the Bayonne Board of Education established quantitative and qualitative criteria and associated merit bonuses for the Superintendent for the 2016-17 school year. Whereas the Board of Education has now reviewed indicators of the achievement of those goals, therefore it is hereby resolved this 6th day of July, 2017, that the Bayonne Board of Education accepts the merit goals as established and are hereby submitted to the Executive County Superintendent of Schools for approval as required by law for NJAC 6A:23A-3.1. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I will second that.
So I have a motion and a second on resolution 19. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garillic?
Aye.
Trustee Lawande?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
I'm sorry, we just lost 59 teachers this evening that aren't coming back, and I can't even consciously vote for anyone in America under this climate, so absolutely not.
Trustee Ryan? Trustee Ryan?
I'd like to agree with Trustee Munoz, but my... Trustee Munoz breaks up there.
It's on, just a little closer.
Trustee Munoz brings up a valid point.
Here.
Trustee Munoz breaks up a valid point. On the other hand, we're advised by Council that we have no choice. She made her goals, and we have to vote yes for that because it's going to happen anyway. Well, I'm gonna go with what the lawyers tell me, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay, Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. President, that is all I have, but I do have two cards that were filled out, but I see Mr. D'Angelo's hand is up. Joe Wyatt, 305 301 Maple Avenue, North Plainfield, New Jersey. You have three minutes. That includes your question and your answers. Please state your name and address for our recorder.
Joe Wyatt, 301 Maple Avenue, Apartment 261, North Plainfield, New Jersey, 07060. I was attending the workshop. I was greatly impressed. It was like night and day from the last meeting. I saw substantive conversation trying to arrive at solutions based on data and not just plain old BS. I mean, I have been attending the workshops, and I can't believe the things you people talk about. It really is amazing. It's like the house is burning down and you're trying to figure out, how am I gonna buy new windows? But one thing I didn't, and I heard a great plan and a database plan that's gonna investigate and make decisions on a rational basis, but what I did not hear was anything to do about the social consequences of what's happened to this school district. the social consequences of what's happened to this school district. Mr. Broderick, would you, I have a question. What do you think is the emotional mood in this school district? What do you think people are feeling in this school district and have felt for the past fourteen years that I've been here?
I can only speak for myself.
Yeah.
I've worked for this school district for many years, and I always considered it a proud place, and I was proud to be here. Now, do you agree with everything that I want, or I agree with everything? No, but I think the parents, students, and most of all, the faculty has always done their best and created a situation I think was very good. Do we have problems? Evidently, we have some financial problems, but I'd say the overall district is, is in good shape, and I think it's gonna be on a positive note.
What is the overall, by what I wanna know? That's very nice, but what I wanna know is what is the emotional state of the people in this district, especially the faculty? That's what I want. That's what I'd like to know.
Well, I can only say my emotional state, and I hope I'm speaking for many others, that I think it's in, it's in good stead that we have problems. We will get over these problems like I promised, and we'll move forward. But I think the, the history of Bayonne has always been a people that, you know, you may knock us down, but you don't keep us down, and they've always gotten up, and they've always been successful, and I don't see any difference in the people that are running the place right now.
Would any other board member like to give their opinion? All right, I'll tell you what it is. It's fear, stark fear, okay? It permeates the organization. When you walk through the halls of this high school, you can feel it, the emptiness, the fear that's been generated, and that fear has generated a mistrust. There is no trust in this high school. And if you don't know that in this school district, especially in this high school, if you don't know that, that's a huge problem.
Okay, Mr. Wyatt, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Your three minutes is up.
But did you count the time he answered?
Mr. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street.
Did you count the time he answered?
I'm sorry, the three minutes is up. Mr. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street. Anthony, could you please repeat your name and address for the recorder?
Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street. I was also in the workshop, and what Dr. Wonko had mentioned, and just clarify if I'm correct, he said that we were three years behind in the five-year maintenance plan that we have to submit for our facilities.
Correct.
Any reason why we're three years behind on a five-year plan if we have like a full staff of maintenance workers and do mostly everything in-house?
The five-year long-range facility plan has gone web-based with the state. The state has not updated the platform where we can get on. We're working in conjunction with our architects, DMR, to visit each and every building and to bring that plan, the plan physically up to, up to date, so we're working on that right now.
Now, does DMR also have engineers and actual construction managers that are gonna come and walk?
It's a full-service architectural firm.
Okay, 'cause architects know how to draw, but they very rarely know how to actually do any of the work, so I would recommend maybe going out to a CEM to have him walk with you, people that actually are gonna do work or know what's actually going on.
Well, we'll take that under recommendation. Thank you, sir.
And my last card is Mr. Mike Morris, 123 Avenue C.
Good evening. Mike Morris, 123 Avenue C, Bayonne. My question is directed to Mr. Broderick. Can you please tell me how much Patsy's bonus is?
I can give you the rough amount. It'd be approximately $26,600, something like that. I'm not...
Hold on.
Mr. Smith, am I correct on that?
Her merit goals equal fourteen, fourteen point nine percent of her base pay of $177,500, $177,500, which equates to a total figure of $26,607, Mr. Morris.
Thank you. Like to make comment on this. Patsy McGeehan left the Bayonne school system in ruins. Teachers were laid off. Fifty-nine teachers are not coming back at this point. You still haven't made a decision on their lives yet. I find it apprehensible that any of the board members should vote for this. Let her sue, because she won't. She should have been charged criminally for what she did, and you allowed it. You made, you made agreements with her not to prosecute her from anything after March 1st, from what I understand. It's a shame. It's not good. We voted you people in to represent us, and you're not doing it. You didn't do it, and I'm not happy with it. I remember that next time I go to vote. Thank you.
Mr. Morris, if I may, I just wanna correct the record for a second. There was no agreement made not to prosecute Patsy McGeehan. The Board doesn't have the authority to do that.
There was no agreement made. There was some sort of agreement made, but I don't remember.
Mr. D'Angelo, I think you are our last speaker.
Three points. The teachers that you're bringing back along with the secretaries, when you sent, I'm assuming you're doing this either email or hand-delivered. Mr. Broderick, I ask that you put in a letter of explanation on what exactly they have to do, sign it, date it, keep a copy for themselves, and I suppose send back the contract. But whatever the procedure is that you want, or whatever you require, please make it clear to those teachers that are getting their jobs back so that they know what to do. Number two, the prescription plan that you passed last Wednesday, I got the information today at about 3 o'clock, so I didn't have time to read fifty pages. I read the cover letter, or the letter that I found to be most important, that the letter serves as an equal-to-or-better-than notice. Our proposal is reflective of and guarantees that we will match the City of Bayonne and Bayonne Board of Ed current benefits as indicated within the materials provided to us by your office. We're gonna look at this, and I was told by Mr. Smith, if I had any questions when we go through all of this, I could send them to him, and I can get the answers. But I'm assuming that this will be seamless. When do you plan on switching over?
Mr. Smith?
Well, it's a process. First, we have to go through pension and benefits, get them the employee list. The broker is actively working on this. We will work on it over the course. The start date, the projected start date, would be two months from the date of acceptance by the Board, so we're looking at a September 1 startup, but that can certainly be pushed back if the paperwork is not done correctly or properly, or up to your standards, Mr. D'Angelo, and I hope that you would be part and parcel of the process when we go through the names and make sure that everybody is there. So we will work vigilantly over the summer to get this done and do it as seamless as we can. What I read also was that it's a self-insured program. Is that correct, Mr. Broderick?
Yes, again, Mr. Smith. Or Mr. Clark?
It's self-insured with an umbrella coverage, so in the event that the expended, the expenditures exceed what's put aside for the plan, then the insurance would kick in to cover the excess, very similar to the minimum premium plan that we had several years ago.
I also read that the broker gets a 2% commission, and is that on the total cost?
I can look at that. I don't know offhand.
Thank you. And the last is the goals of the superintendent that you just voted on. Where did you get the goals from? Do you make the goals up yourself, or they are given to you by the state?
Those goals were, if I'm not mistaken, they're made up by the superintendent, submitted to the county superintendent, who had to approve them, then they sent them back to us, approved.
She made up her own goals?
They make, yes.
Can I, can I answer that?
Excuse me?
Let me answer your question. When merit pay for superintendents came into effect when superintendent salaries were reduced in New Jersey, and it was a product of statute, and because the Department of Education and the governor's efforts were to provide for merit throughout education, starting with a superintendent going to each level of education, they thought, start at the top, and they provided for merit goals, and the intent of that was to make up some of the money that was lost by the cap salaries. The merit goals were drafted by the individual who was seeking the merit and submitted to the Executive County Superintendent for review. The Executive County Superintendents throughout the state of New Jersey have criteria they look at to either approve or disapprove goals. In this case, Superintendent McGeehan's goals were always approved by the county. Throughout New Jersey, there were many superintendents who their goals were not approved. Once the goals are approved, then the second part of the equation is whether they've been satisfied. If the goals are satisfied, then as a matter of contract, they have to be paid by the Board of Education. So in the case of our board tonight, they had no choice because this is, this is a contractual matter. If the contract is satisfied, you have to comply with it, and that's what this was.
And this board has no input into the goals?
This board, the board does have input into the goals. Yeah, the boards traditionally have input into the goals with the superintendent. They have input into evaluations, all of those sources to come up with goals, but the key factor is what the county superintendent, executive county superintendent approves.
I would suggest that you, when you make the goals going forward, that you put in some fiscal responsibility on the part of the superintendent. In this case, she's short $6 million, and she's walking away with a bonus. I find that just ridiculous, but you're telling me, or your lawyers are telling you, you have to vote yes? That's the problem. That's the problem. The county superintendent is just a figurehead for the state, and they allow this to happen, but you people should get involved with it on that level, and certainly with, with what happened, fifty-nine teachers have lost their jobs, and we have the superintendent getting a bonus this year. Ridiculous.
It's something we would look at. I, I'm not, I'm not a big favor of goals in the first place. I think merit goals are, it's a part of the person's job.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, we came into a situation that, that was, we inherited, and we're going with what our attorneys say, and she completed the goals according to the rules of the state and the county, and we're just abiding by that. But thank you.
Yes, Mr. Morris, can I, can I comment on that?
We, we brought you, why don't we, what we voted was...
Well, you haven't been able to answer your question.
Excuse me, we don't, we don't take comments from the audience...
Thank you.
...without going to the mic. No. So do we have a motion to adjourn? There's a motion from Trustee Lawanda. Is there a second? Second from Trustee Desmond. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn.
You have one more?
What is the board asking me to do?
We have one more card.
Mr. President?
She can do one more.
We're gonna do a card.
Carol Bisiotis, 11 Pavonia Court. I just have one question. I noticed on the paperwork hanging that there's nine assistant football coaches and one head coach. Is that correct?
Whatever's on there.
But yet we still are not, we're still without fifty-nine teachers. Can anybody explain that?
Let me explain something. As far as athletics go, yes, is there coaches on there? Yes, but that's needed for safety and other reasons. But the athletic department has been cut by, Mr. Smith, can you remind me, it's 25% or?
The athletic department's budget has been cut from where it was by, as have all departments, by 65% to a level of 35%. Then we further looked at it, and their supply line will be cut an additional 25%. We're also not doing uniforms every four years. We're usually on a four-year rotation. We've pushed that back another year to try to save some money. And we have Mr. Jacobson, our new director of athletics, who's looking at each and every line item, so...
But why do we need nine assistants and one head coach? I don't understand.
I would think because of, number one, it's a contact sport, number two, there are three different levels, freshman, JV, and varsity...
But the same would be said for soccer?
The number of students and the violent nature of the game to begin with when you, what football is.
Well, some of these classrooms are violent and more than, you know, the limit is thirty-two kids for one teacher, right? So if you have sixty kids on the football team and nine assistant coaches, you do the math. Between all three teams? I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how we have essentially ten people on the payroll for a sport when we have fifty-nine teachers that didn't get their, their jobs back tonight. This is the Board of Education, it's not the Board of Athletics, correct? So, just a statement. Thank you. Dr. Wonko, welcome.
Thank you. These are generally...
Can I ask you a question? I have to let a card.
Sure.
I will say this, though.
Alex Calleney, 46, West 13th Street, Bayonne. I was at your workshop earlier, and Dr. Wonko, correct me if I'm wrong, you said you had a, a great academy in the school, correct?
Correct.
Okay. My question is, on Resolution 14, you demoted the administrator, Laura Craig, with the same pay. It doesn't make sense to me. If you're not saving money, how are you demoting someone that is making a great program in the high school, as the superintendent has already stated?
The program, the program isn't necessarily changing, but if I use the term, it's decentralizing. And what happened was, directors such as the Director of Science or the Director of Math really had no input as to who was going to get into the academy, and we just are putting the power back into the administrators, who are the experts in those particular fields, as to who to decide whether, let's say somebody just wants to take the English honors program. Well, originally, you had to be in the academy, or you couldn't do that. We want it to be in the hands of the English director and decide if that student wants to take honors and doesn't want to take the math honors program, that they'll be allowed to do that. So we're bringing it back to the directors more than was in before.
So you're stating that someone who's, go ahead.
If I might, her salary was cut over $50,000 from the first move to the second move, and now she's just kind of...
Okay, but she's, was the administrator at this current salary, and now she's gonna be a music teacher collecting the same salary. My, my, my concern is, I have a daughter coming in...
She's a teacher at the same salary that she would have been at. The cut took place a few months back, and it was about $50,000.
I understand that, and so a couple of months back, but from then until now, she was acting administrator, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, at the salary rate that she'll be getting as a music teacher, correct?
Can you explain?
The issue, the issue is that Ms. Craig will be filling in for a music...
For a missing teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
The issue is that Ms. Craig will be taking the position of a music teacher that isn't being brought back.
Okay.
So the entire move between that music teacher and Ms. Craig's salary, I think it saved the district about $90,000. And, oh, and I'm sorry, and we didn't also bring back the secretary of the academy. That will be brought back to the actual directors, Director of English, Director of Math, Director of Science. So all those moves in conjunction saved about ninety grand for the district.
Okay. Now, here's my concern. I have a daughter coming into the academy in the fall. I have a daughter who's a senior. You had a great administrator, 'cause it came right out from the superintendent's voice. However, now you, who's gonna run the academy? You're gonna tell me there's eight different people? What are you gonna have, an English, a math, a science? Who's gonna run the academy now?
The director in charge of that academy.
Who's, there is no director anymore. You just took her title away, and you took her job away, correct?
Everything is being decentralized. It's going back to the department from which they came. As Mr. Broderick had stated, a freshman coming into the building, if they wanted to take an honors course, they had to be in the academy. We're now opening it up to all students. We want to be equal for everyone. We want to be equal for everyone.
Again, my question though is if my daughter came into the academy, who's running the academy? Now we have eight different heads running the academy or no?
The department heads are running whatever is germane to their specific expertise. So that would be language arts, that's the language arts person, mathematics, mathematics, science, science, and so on. It's no longer one person who's deciding all of those areas. So every student in the school will now have the ability to sign up for any of those courses.
Okay.
Alex, thank you, but your time is up. I hope that got your answer.
Just one other thing. Are the parents of the academy students now going to be aware that the administrator's been taken away and it's going to be handled differently or no? Or do we have to spread the word ourselves?
No, we will make notice of everything that we do. We will be very transparent.
Okay.
Did you, did you, Ms. Montgomery, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Do you want me to write a card? My question is, are you telling us the academy is gone?
No.
No.
Okay, but if you came into the school and wanted to take honors math or honors English, you could do that.
Yes.
But you're saying you couldn't do that unless you were in the academy, so I'm very confused.
A freshman coming into the building could not take any honors unless they were in the academy.
Is that true?
In the past. In the past, not the future.
My daughter just graduated two years ago and she's telling me that is not true.
That is very true. We have high school teachers over there that are telling us it's 100% true.
Okay, so you are telling me that our children are still going to be in the academy, that have been in the academy?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, but who's going to run it?
The directors.
The directors.
The directors who aren't in that building and have...
We have, we have one school. We have one school and we're serving all students.
Correct. But how many are in that wing or house, however you want to call it?
I don't have the number in front of me, but it could have a range depending on the year. And I believe a few years back from my interviews and collecting that data, they did make a change last year that some people who were in the academy, people who were not in the academy were allowed to take upper-level honors. So the move has already started to allow students to expand the offerings that we offer. So that has happened already. Now I'm moving it down to the ninth grade as well. Again, we're not going to run a private school and a public school. We're a public school. Everyone's going to be treated equally. Everyone's going to have the same opportunity.
I do feel what others are saying, there is a lot of fear here. I have a child in the academy, she's terrified what's going to happen. She wants to move. I have two small children in the public, in two different grammar schools in Bayonne and I can't tell you how upset every child was. This is the first year in all our years, our kids did not know who their teacher is going to be next year. They did not have that experience. They all came out. There is fear. Nobody knows what's happening. Our kids are upset. From the littlest child, you really need to do something.
Thank you.
Our last speaker, Charmin Montgomery.
Charmin Montgomery, 57, Garrettson. So if Mrs. Craig is being taken from Fine Arts Academy coordinator down to being a music teacher, then what's happening to the Medical Arts that just opened up, to the Business Academy, to the STEM Academy, to the Science Academy? And when will those people be demoted to teachers as well? Not that I'm wishing that on them, but if we're all going to be in one school, when are all those academies going away and their directors going away?
The courses will still be run.
The courses are running, but if Laura's not running the Fine Arts Academy...
I explained that other than...
And the rumor is that there's not going to be a dance floor, there's not going to be a Guitar III, there's not going to be the upper classmen level classes for the kids in the Arts Academy. What are they doing if they're in the Arts Academy? My son didn't go to prep. He didn't go to high tech. He came here for the Arts Academy and now it sounds like he's not even going to have the one class that puts him in the Arts Academy because it may not exist next year.
Well, we...
And we don't know that right now. And that's sort of...
Would you like an answer?
Yes.
We've made every effort to combine classes because the former superintendent made a very wise move, putting 15 as a cap for the lowest class you could run. So we combined classes so that we'd reach that number of 15 so that we could save more positions and bring more people back. I'm not going to have one teacher with nine students in a class and another teacher with 29 students in a class.
Which is completely fair, but if there were 16 Guitar III kids, they met the 15 minimum.
Anyone that made the 15 minimum is in.
Okay.
They didn't make the 15 minimum, we tried to combine classes to reach that number of 15 so that no student would be hurt.
So if there's 15 Guitar III kids, that class stays for next year. Thank you.
Also, if I could just say one thing, you were asking about some of the other, what they call academies, like the vocational and the medical. Those aren't really, well, they're academies, but they're more of a track and the students take a track. They're in a regular homeroom, they take regular lunch, but they go on their track and they accomplish the goals they want to do by just taking classes while still being in the general public. So there'd be nothing wrong with those programs as far as going forward. It's what they should have been in the first place. Thank you. That's it.
Motion to adjourn by Trustee Lawanda. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Desmond. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn public meeting. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finner.
Yes.
Trustee Garlick.
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
953. Trustees, we're back inside.